Mayor Martini?
Here.
Council members Ratty, absent. Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Kerrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, we have invocation speaker Pastor Brad Darnes. Is Brad here?
Here.
Oh, there he is. I didn't look far enough. You can all staff for the invocation, please. This is good to be Brad Darnes?
Apparently, two weeks in a row, or two times in a row.
We love it, though, Brad.
Isaiah 41 says this, "The poor and needy search for water, and there is none; their tongues are parched with thirst. But I, the Lord, will answer them. I, the God of Israel, will not forsake them. I will make rivers flow on the barren heights, and springs in the valleys. I will turn the desert into pools of water, and the parched ground into springs." Let's pray. Father, we thank you for a chance to gather together as a community, and, Lord, I know that on our agenda today is lots of things about water. And we are in need of water in our community. And, Father, we pray that you will send those rains that we need, maybe even this week. And, Father, we pray that you'll give guidance and wisdom to our council as they gather together. Lord, I thank you for the connection of community as they proclaim the different things that are on the agenda today, as they deal with the issues of money, as we honor Sean Carey today. Father, I just thank you for a chance to be a community that cares about one another, and as united together, may you guide and direct their thoughts in all that they say and do. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Esquaga, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Next is comments from the public. I have no public speaking cards. Anyone want to speak under public comment? If you do, please fill out one of these cards. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to approving the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? If not, looking for motion. Mr. Smith?
Moved to approve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt, to approve the agendas outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously with those present. Recommendation to approve minutes of the March 10th, 2014 council meeting. Any additions or deletions? Mr. Lawson?
Moved to approve.
Do you have a second? Mr. Smith?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilman Smith, to approve the council meeting minutes of March 10th, 2014. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to 4.1, Proclamation of the John Esquaga and Family Day. Is there anybody here to accept this? Oh, yeah, there they are. Hi, folks, thanks for being here. Let me read the proclamation, then I'd love for each one of you to come down and say a few words, if you don't mind, please. Whereas nearly sixty years ago, on St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, 1955, John Esquaga and his partner opened The Nugget, a sixty-seat coffee shop in Sparks, Nevada. Whereas in The Nugget's early days, the awful, awful hamburger with fries cost sixty-five cents and propelled the meal to historic and famed regional favorite because it was awful, awful good. And whereas countless stars of stage and screen, comedy and vocal, local and international fame graced the showrooms at John Esquaga's Nugget for the entertainment pleasure of locals and tourists from all over the world. And whereas Bertha, the elephant, gained world fame as she took the stage in the celebrity room and became the longest-running casino act in Nevada history, giving joy to countless thousands of children and adults for over thirty-five years. And whereas John Esquaga's vision of the biggest and best fireworks show in the Truckee Meadows came to life in 2000 when John Esquaga's Nugget, the city of Sparks, and other Sparks businesses came together to produce Star Spangled Sparks, the renowned Independence Day celebration on Victorian Square. Whereas the best in the West Nugget Rib Cook-Off has become a celebrated landmark event for more than twenty years and brings life to Labor Day, along with stellar entertainment and gastric food delights for the enjoyment of tens of thousands every September. And whereas Michonne and Stephen Esquaga work in partnership with their father, interacting with local government, participating in tourism, marketing programs, and special events that attract countless visitors to Sparks and the region. And whereas the Esquaga family is dedicated to education and higher learning and provides dozens of annual scholarships to local youth, and the philanthropic generosity of the Esquaga family has significantly benefited the Sparks community and the Truckee Meadows. And whereas The Nugget has grown and prospered into the city's landmark resort casino and is Sparks's skyscraper icon and has raised the geographical location of our city. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 24th, 2014 as John Esquaga and Family Day. Let's go, or we can hear you on the microphone, John. You do whatever you want, it's your day.
Damn right, I'm gonna take it all. You know, I just have to say that my fifty-nine years at The Nugget has been a dream, and I think I'm a native Sparksite. My first house was 827 East Street, 1240 Spagia, 1300 North Truckee, and so I've covered the area pretty good. But I'd just like to say that we certainly, I'm proud of what Sparks developed in this area. We're the first with a profit-sharing plan. Now they call it 401K. Our scholarship program is something outstanding, but it's just been one thing after another. As I look back, there's none other casino owner could say they had owned an elephant. And we miss Bertha, Tina, Angel, but, you know, it's all said and done with the article in the paper yesterday praising Michonne Esquaga. And, you know, that's what made our Nugget, was our employees. And, you know, we loved our employees, they're part of our family, but fifty-nine years has been a dream. But we've got a track record you can't believe for some of the ups and downs, but everyone was a winner. And look how the city's progressed. When we first moved, our casino started, that's when they phased out the steamers and went for diesel. And everybody thought that Sparks was going downhill, and instead it went uphill. We ended up around twenty-four hundred employees to start with, so it's been great. But I just want to talk about our employees. I'm so proud of them, I love them. And I just wanted to tell you a story that, when this change took place, I received a letter from Monterey, California, that said, "Everybody's in tears in Monterey because of the change in ownership." And they came up to, everybody knows the Oyster Bar, of course, but this couple came in and they walked in and they said, "Boy, Mr. Esquaga sure hired a lot of old people here." And this one of the food servers said, "Old, we started young." He hadn't had a compliment, but I could go on and on, but Mary Jean and all of the councilmen, this is a great city, and it's gone a long ways from when we first. But again, I just want to thank you for the honor that you bestowed on The Nugget, and I can't say about my two people next to me, Michonne and Stephen, they're just champs.
Thank you, though.
Start right at the top, safety first. John, thanks for being here, and I shared a few of those awful, offals in your first restaurant. That's the first time I was in there when I was a little kid, about ten, eleven years old, and had one of your awful, offals. It said sixty-five cents here, I thought it was fifty-five. Maybe I'm wrong.
It's going up.
Yeah, just not too much, though, has it? Anyway, thank you all for being here, and thank you so much for what you've done for the city of Sparks, we appreciate it. Okay, I'd like to move 4.3 up one, if you don't mind. Mr. Granata's here, and he's got a ride from City Lift that's scheduled here soon, and I want to make sure he gets a chance to catch his ride. So if you don't mind, I'm going to move 4.3 up. Okay, this is for Brain Injury Awareness Month. Is there anyone else here besides Denny to get this? Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and read it, and then I'd like you to come up and say a few words, please. Whereas every year, over 1.7 million Americans sustain a tragic, traumatic brain injury about every eighteen seconds, and among those who survive, 275,000 people per year must learn to cope with a lifelong loss of function. And whereas 5.3 million Americans, 2% of the US population, currently live with disabilities resulting from a brain injury. And whereas motor vehicle accidents cause 17% of brain injuries, falls 35%, assaults and firearms 26%, sports and recreation and other 22%. And whereas an estimated 200,000 children are hospitalized each year with brain trauma and over 30,000 sustained permanent disabilities every year in the US, 50,000 children sustain bicycle-related brain injuries, of those, over 400 die. And whereas males are twice as likely to sustain a brain injury than females, and young men between the ages of fifteen and twenty-four have the highest rate of injury, and every year, 177,000 Americans will die as a result of a traumatic brain injury. And whereas on Saturday, March 29th, Nevada's Third Annual Walk for Thought is being held at the Sparks Marina at 10:00 AM. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim March 2014 as Brain Injury Awareness Month in and for the city of Sparks, and encourage all citizens to give recognition and appreciation to the Head Injury Association of Nevada for their mission to help brain injury survivors put their lives together, piece by piece, through support, empowerment, resources, public awareness, education, and youth prevention programs. Thank you. Please. Just one thing first, I want you all to know that Denny and I have been, I made fun of him, but Denny and I have been friends for thirty-five, forty years. We used to play racquetball together, and he used to kick my butt all the time, so he was a great racquetball player in the day. So I just wanted to say I made fun of him, but it was all a good sport. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Amoros, and I'm the president of the Head Injury Association of Northern Nevada. First of all, what an honor to be able to follow the John Esquaga Nugget. That is amazing. It actually brought tears to me to see that, so what an icon for our community. Denny's an inspiration to us all, as well. He gets around, you see him, he manages to get his rides, and even though he might not speak a lot, we know he knows what's going on, and he's a big force of our organization. My personal experience was that I had a son that was a very motivated young man. Anyway, he crashed in the desert in Windover, Nevada, racing. He was the youngest ever to go pro in off-road racing, and ended up about ninety miles an hour crashing and put himself in a coma for twenty-four days with very little brain activity. And we never thought he would make it. He ended up waking up, and he was completely paralyzed, and that's where our journey began about six years ago. I've been extremely blessed. I made it my mission, I took every power I was being self-employed and put it into that kid. In doing so, we were able to have some very good progress with him. 2011, he rode his bicycle across the country to raise awareness, 2,788 miles, to show people the possibilities. The good thing is, is that he wants to give back, based on that. He understands that maybe it's not that for everybody, but what is for everybody, and to let them know that to never give up. Denny never gives up, and that's an inspiration. But in saying that, when we came home to do rehab, we found that there was not a lot of aftercare. I think we do an amazing job in our hospitals and research, and even a lot of our rehab hospitals, but it's the long haul. It's the everyday process that happens. It's the wear-down that takes place with the personality can have some changes, but maybe not, but it's outburst. It's just a large amount of things that happen, and unfortunately with the brain, if we don't keep that going, we are going to decrease, as we do when we age, kind of, you lose it, if you don't use it, you're going to lose it. And so our main goal now with the Head Injury Association of Northern Nevada, we've been around since 1982 as a support group, but with the awareness and a lot more of the education, we need the aftercare. So our main goal is to create a day center where people have to go and they can continue learning, as we all continue to learn, but that there's no judgment, and to give them the opportunities to be the best they can be. So thank you very much for your support.
Thank you so much for being here, we appreciate it. Thanks, Denny.
Want to say?
What's that? Oh, go ahead. Mr. Lawson?
I've known Denny for Dr. Granata.
Exactly.
For twenty-plus years. Whenever I have a bad day, I look at you, you're a great inspiration. Keep going.
Thanks, Denny. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can he even participate in our walk? Nothing stops him.
Okay, let's go back to 4.2 now. Proclamation of National Service Recognition Day. Is there someone here to accept this? Come on down, please. I'll go ahead and read it, and then tell us what your name is, and we'll do a few minutes. Go ahead, have a seat if you want. Well, I was going to give you Sean Carey Day. Proclamation. Whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas national service participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities, from educating students for jobs of the 21st century, and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities, and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for all those who serve. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an initiative an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Services and Nevada Volunteers, the Governor's Commission on Service, share a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, strengthen communities, and is joining with National League of Cities, City of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service of April 1st, 2014. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2014 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Thank you.
For the record, Amber Martin, Nevada Volunteers, the Governor's Commission on Service. I want to thank Sparks for participating. There's approximately a thousand mayors, thank you, across the country who are participating and recognizing national service. For the city of Sparks, we have a variety of programs. We have Senior Companion Programs, Foster Grandparent Programs, Mayor Core State Programs, where individuals really commit to ensuring that older adults stay in their homes, that children get assistance in their schools, especially at-risk ninth graders, that families can find access to community services. But really, just briefly, if I can just recognize the nonprofit partners that help make that happen in Sparks. Children's Cabinet, the Elvira Lewis Forum, or Seniors in Service, which is the Foster Grandparent Program and Senior Companion Program, Retired and Senior Volunteer Program of Washoe County, Nevada Conservation Corps, and Nevada Outdoor School. All of those organizations make sure that those federal funds actually come into Sparks. So thank you very much for your recognition. And now that you've sat down, could we just get one photo with some of our Senior Companion folks in here? Sorry.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all of the work, we appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to 4.4, Tribute to City Manager Sean Carey, also known as Scary. Okay, I'll read the proclamation, and then we have a short video, and then Sean, if you and the lovely Jane would come down and say a few words, we'd appreciate it. Whereas Sean D. Carey, D is Douglas. Whereas Sean Douglas Carey grew up and obtained his advanced education in Sparks and Northern Nevada, worked in his profession as civil engineer in several cities in western United States, and then returned to his hometown to serve as Public Works Director and Assistant City Manager, and has served the residents of the city of Sparks as their city manager since January of 2000. And whereas Sean Carey has passionately served the region on significant matters affecting the lives of citizens, families, and business entities, and has seen his city grow and prosper. Whereas Sean Carey has directed his city through difficult fiscal challenges, and has steadfastly ensured the city of Sparks remains a full-service city, and one that is responsive to its citizens, even in the light of the debilitating economic recession. And whereas Sean Carey's leadership has largely contributed to turning an abandoned and blighted hole in the ground into a beautiful and acclaimed Sparks Marina. And whereas Sean Carey guided the culmination of the region's inevitable, enviable Golden Eagle Regional Park, which draws tens of thousands of locals and visitors through its gates every year. And whereas through his leadership and ability to build relationship, Sean Carey has worked with many groups and parties to bring about the rebirth of Sparks' Victorian Square, the legends of Sparks Marina, and the numerous programs and policies that have benefited the quality of life for residents in Sparks and throughout the Truckee Meadows. Whereas Sean Carey, a lifelong resident of Sparks, has served his city proudly for over twenty-two years, working tirelessly with his city council and city staff, and has contributed to the prosperity of the fifth-largest city in Nevada. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim April 4th, 2014 as Sean D. Carey Day in the city of Sparks, and thank our friend, coworker, and leader for his passion and dedication to us and to our city. Thank you, Sean. Okay, now a short video.
I attended George Dilworth Elementary School right here on Prater Way.
I blame you for this, Mayberry.
Yeah, you can. Well, I attended George Dilworth Elementary School right here on Prater Way, and used to make my way into ninth grade as Sparks, ninth grade, to go to Sparks High School every day. And I would walk by this building, which was then painted blue, as it is, is today's white. And I always wondered what went on in that building.
Sean, I wish you all the best. Retirement is something we all hope for, and I'm really happy for you that you're getting out when the getting's good, and have very good futures, sir.
Sean, I wish you the very best. We're going to try one more time.
Well, I attended George Dilworth Elementary School right here on Prater Way, and used to make my way into ninth grade as Sparks.
He never could get those bugs in City Hall worked out.
Well, I attended George Dilworth Elementary School right here on Prater Way, and used to make my way into ninth grade as Sparks.
He never could get those bugs in City Hall worked out.
He's going to start dancing.
Well, I attended George Dilworth Elementary School right here on Prater Way, and used to make my way into ninth grade as Sparks, ninth grade, to go to Sparks High School every day. And I would walk by this building, which was then painted blue, as it is, is today's white. And I always wondered what went on in that building.
Sean, I wish you all the best. Retirement is something we all hope for, and I'm really...
Do that, Mayberry.
It's set for you, Mayberry.
Heads real roll.
Well, I attended George Dilworth Elementary School right here on Prater Way. Turn it up. And I would walk by this building, which was then painted blue, as it is, is today's white. And I always wondered what went on in that building.
Sean, I wish you all the best. Retirement is something we all hope for, and I'm really happy for you that you're getting out when the getting's good, and have very good futures, sir.
Sean, I wish you the very best.
I want to thank you for everything that you've done for me, and to teach me that doing the right thing is always the right thing.
Hey, Sean, we had a call, we're going to miss you up there.
I still expect that you'll continue to be the city's rail traffic engineer.
Sean, it's been a nice work with you all these years.
I enjoyed working with you, Sean.
Sean, I certainly hope you have a great retirement, and you'll be greatly missed here in the city of Sparks.
Wish I could raise a little stiffer, but Dasani will have to do.
Thanks for letting me be a part of your team, it's been a pleasure. Good luck.
Hey, Sean, I will always remember you being really light on your feet.
For the short time that I have to meet you, you're always very friendly, just always able to help you.
Hey, Sean, congratulations.
Light on your feet.
Combine business anytime, we need somebody at the back.
Congratulations, and yes, I'm jealous.
Just so jealous.
I hope the retirement's great, let me you keep on keeping out the cruises, another great vacation like you're here.
Hi, Sean, it's nice working with you.
It has been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you luck in your future endeavors.
So, Sean, you're leaving, and you decided to take over the duties of...
Bye, Sean. We'll miss you.
We'll miss you. It's been a real pleasure working for you. I think we've been a great team for a long time, and it's been a real joy. Your professionalism has always really led me. The leadership and the region has been greatly appreciated, and you're gonna be a hard act to call.
You pointed out a cute-looking girl, and wanted me to go talk to her. You said, "Come on, let's go, let's go talk to her." Anyway, we would say hi or something like that. She went her way, and I walked back into it, and you said, "I bet Charles Caffey doesn't do that with his employees." Good luck to you. Wish you the best. Take care. Been a great guy, and we're missing him. A lot of things I've learned from this. Wish well, and have a great retirement.
I became an engineering intern at the City of Reno. Even after I got my kind of call in the government service, got a good job in civil engineering, and then worked on three other governments, before getting up to need to come back to the City of Sparks as the Public Works Director. And that was one of the attractions the city saw in me, was my experience in California working with impact fees. I was living over in Lincoln, California, and my parents still live here. And I got a call saying I made the list for an interview for the job of Public Works Director. Interesting part of that was, I thought I needed to get an interview and get the visit along that weekend. And here I am 21 years later, on behalf of this great city. The challenge is, back when I first started with the City of Sparks, we were entering a period of growth. And we were really seeking, as a community, a different kind of growth. Mayor Breslow and members of the city council wanted to raise the standards, and wanted to achieve the outcomes of the City of Sparks as a city.
I wish you the best.
Lucky dog. Now, I hope you make the best of it, and take advantage of this opportunity, and go out and figure out what you want to do next, and have a lot of fun.
Sean, we're gonna miss you. I'm gonna miss you personally. We offered you a tremendous amount of opportunities here at Sparks. Exposed me to things I never dreamed of when I came to work for the city. I thank you for that.
Mr. Carey, thank you for 14 great years. I wish you happiness and health in your retirement, and may your travels along the Yellow Brick Road always be great. Just don't complain.
Good luck, and it was wonderful working with you.
It has been an honor knowing you, and have fun.
Things I'm gonna miss most about you are the way you've always encouraged me to speak my mind, and the comfort you always gave us in those all employee meetings.
On behalf of the Sparks City Attorney's Office, we'd like to thank you for all of your hard work, dedication, and your commitment to the citizens and the staff of the City Attorney.
Terry Reynolds told me he hired a kid from Sparks High School, I figured. But he hired the entire offensive line. And then the first thing, I think it was your first week, we said, "Oh, by the way, you need to relocate 30 people from downtown, knock down their houses, and we're changing B Street to Victorian Avenue and building Victorian Square." And you didn't blink, and you did it. And we said, "Hey, we like the only effluent reuse system in northern Nevada." You said, "Okay," and you did it. And then, it was your idea, I think the statute of limitations has run out on this, but during the flood of 97, when you kind of let a little water into the Sparks Marina, just to keep some apartment complexes from flooding, and you saved everybody, you collapsed Interstate 85. Actually, could make extra in a day, if you were a little wiser. Sean, it has been such a pleasure to know you, to see you in action. You have changed the face of Sparks.
Sean, congratulations on a great career with the City of Sparks. Very nice working with you over my past few years. You're gonna be sorely missed.
And you're catching me, of course, on the day that we just made it through the joint meeting on the EMS issue, so you're my hero.
Just wanted to tell you that it was a pleasure working with you. But more than that, it was a lot of fun. Gonna remember the Ireland trip, and who could forget the Beijing trip with you, the mayor, and myself in that cab, with our Mao hats singing Chinese rap. Anyway, I wish you a lot of luck. Hope you and Jane have a good time, take a lot of cruises. Hope I don't see your name in the paper for being on one that breaks down somewhere.
Okay, you know, Sean, standing here at the base of the business, and I believe you actually had something to do with building this whole section, even DeAndrea, because it was a year, 21 years ago.
On behalf of the City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department, and my predecessor Stan Shear, I want to thank you for your support and guidance for some major projects that include Golden Eagle Regional Park, Sparks Marina Park, Weddiken Regional Park, and the Larry D. Johnson Community Center. We couldn't have done it without you, and we wish you a very happy retirement. Thank you.
I do need to tell you that I'm a little disappointed. I'm really looking forward to working for you, working with you. Well, first off, Sean, Mr. Sean Carey, congratulations to you for your wonderful years of service for the City of Sparks, and your public work services you've given us, not only here, but in the rest of the country. You've been an excellent city manager, and I really want to thank you for that.
Well, Sean, for the first part, I just want to say we're gonna seriously miss you around here after 14 years of great work that you've done for the city. You've been the glue that's held us together. You've made some great recommendations to us as mayor and council, and I really appreciate all that you've done for the city. You know, don't be a stranger.
Hi, Sean. Thank you for everything you've done for the city. Really appreciate it.
Sean from the Sparks Fire Department. Thank you.
Mr. Carey, thanks for all your service, and I want to send you a personal thank you.
Well, Sean, just sitting here on my couch outside my office, just thinking about retirement. I know you're gonna be enjoying it, and I'm not. Expected to have a few more years, but you rather than a few short months kind of caught us off-guard, but just wanted to say congratulations. Really, over the course of the last five years, you took the city through some very tumultuous times, and we're gonna wake out with your leadership.
I'm trying to think back of specific moments that were impactful to me, and I keep coming back to the vigil at the Marina, First Sparks Middle School. I thought you did a tremendous job, and that was the time where it was very clear to me how much passion and how much feeling you have for this community.
And the good Lord put us on this earth to love each other. Love thy neighbor. Love each other. Love this community. And turn away from violence. It's everywhere. It's everywhere, and we make a conscious choice to turn away from it, to confront it with government, to confront it with family values. And the people that are holding your hand tonight will join you in a spirit of love that will never be forgotten. What happened at Sparks Middle School was a moment of violence. What's happening here tonight is a moment of honest, pure love.
City Hall will never be the same without you, Sean. Thanks for everything. We're gonna miss you.
So, I guess for a kid who grew up here in lockdown at Prater Way, I've now found out what goes on in this building.
Well, thank you all very much for the opportunity to serve this city. It's been a great pleasure working with every one of you, every one of you. And I think that the city's in good hands with all of its employees and Steve, and especially with you as elected officials. So, best wishes always. I intend to stay here. Thanks, Sean. Jane, thanks for being here. Appreciate it.
You betcha.
Okay, let's move on to consent items, 5-1 through 5-3. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Not looking for a motion? Mr. Ratty.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the consent items as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Next is 6.1, which is a first reading.
Bill number 2668, in ordinance providing for the conducting and holding of a primary and general election to be held in the City of Sparks on the 10th day of June 2014 and the 4th day of November 2014 respectively, providing filing fees and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is first reading of bill number 2668. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, April 14th, 2014. 6.2, consideration of possible approval of an interlocal agreement between the City of Sparks and Washoe County to allow for the conducting and holding of a 2014 primary and general elections. You doing this? Go ahead.
That would be me, Teresa Gardner, City Clerk. NRS and the Sparks Charter state that the city council controls elections. Bill number 2668, which was just read in the previous agenda item, states the offices of mayor, wards 2 and 4, and municipal judge for Department 1 will be elected in 2014. It also allows the city to enter into an agreement with Washoe County to conduct the election. The city charter has allowed for this since 2001, and Washoe County Registrar Voters has been conducting the city elections since 2002. This interlocal agreement needs your approval to allow the registrar to go ahead and conduct the 2014 election.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? No questions, looking for a motion? Mr. Schmidt.
I'm ready to make a motion. I just wanted to make sure that we're allowed to do this before the second reading of the
Mr. Attorney.
Sure. This interlocal agreement is not dependent upon the item 6.1.
Okay. All right. I'll make a motion that we city council direct staff conduct the city elections as a standalone election. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Mr. Schmidt.
I'm on the wrong one.
Oops, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Nope, I went back to my other item.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the interlocal agreement. AC 5019 provides for conducting and holding of the primary and general elections for 2014.
Mr. Schmidt.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve agenda item 6.2. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Moving on to 6.3, consideration and possible approval of appointment of A, one member of the city council to represent the City of Sparks on the Board of Trustees of the Western Regional Water Commission for a two-year term ending March 31, 2016, and B, recommendation to the City of Reno for a joint appointment of one elected official to represent the owners of the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility on the Board of Trustees of the Western Regional Water Commission for a two-year term ending March 31st, 2016. Who's gonna handle this? Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Per the information that was provided in the staff report, it gives times and dates and authorities. And what is being proposed here is to reappoint Mr. Ron Smith as the city's representative, and the mayor, Gina Martini, as the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility resident, representative to the Western Regional Water Commission.
Question, Mr. Carrigan.
Some move.
If a second. Mr. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve agenda item 6.3 as outlined. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.4, consideration of possible approval of the final grade operational audit for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility by Amoresco Inc. Mr. Drinkwater.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You have before you for your consideration the next four agenda items that are closely related, and essentially the presentation on 6.3 will be the presentation for all four of the items, but of course you must consider those individually. First up, as soon as I learn how to drive the... Okay, we have the performance, excuse me, the operational audit, the financial grade audit that was contracted for. I'm gonna back up one step, just to get everyone on the same page, a very quick update on, reminder of what ESCO projects are. Energy service performance contracting is allowed under NRS 332 for public entities. It allows energy service companies to perform operational audits of public entities such as wastewater treatment plants, for energy and operational savings, to propose measures to realize those savings, and to construct improvements to realize those savings. One of the elements of a performance contract is there's a guaranteed maximum construction pricing, so when the contractor comes back to us, when the ESCO company comes to us, they say, "We can build this for you, and it will cost no more than some certain amount of money." Similarly, there's a guaranteed minimum annual savings, and that savings must be guaranteed for a period of 15 years. That's in Nevada law. So, any, when the ESCO project is completed, when the audit is completed, which you have before you, there's a number put on the table, and they guarantee that number. Anything above that number is retained by the owner, in this case, the two cities that own Tom Wharf. Anything below that number, if at the end of the day the savings just do not materialize, then the ESCO company is financially liable to the cities to make up the difference. Every year is separate, there's no averaging year to year. Each of the 15 years must be dealt with individually. And the projected savings before any construction began must be validated by an independent third-party review to establish that they were reasonable. So, through, City of Reno, excuse me, as all capital improvement projects at Tom Wharf is led by the City of Reno, had an RFP process, and in that, Amoresco was selected to perform the operational audit for Tom Wharf in August of 2012. But there were initially seven companies that were interested. It was a multiple-stage selection process, and Amoresco was selected. That audit was completed in January of 2014, and that is the document attached to your staff report, a copy of which I have here. So, functionally, this item, before you write now, 6.3, is the presentation of this audit, which is the deliverable from a contract that this body approved 14 months ago, excuse me, 16 months ago. In that audit, most of Tom Wharf's processes were analyzed. Numerous energy conservation measures were initially scrutinized for applicability and financial viability. That involved numerous visits with Tom Wharf staff, with potential contractors, with the Amoresco team, with the City of Reno engineering team, with Amoresco's engineering team, which was Corolla Incorporated. And that resulted in the project that you have before you today. So, the ECM, the energy conservation measures that survive scrutiny, are those listed on the screen in front of you. I'll give a very brief description of each one. Centrate nutrient recovery, that's the process where we recover phosphorus from the centrate, which is the liquid waste stream coming out of the dewatering operation. We recover that phosphorus, turn it into a financially viable fertilizer product, a marketable product, which we would then wholesale to the company, Ostera USA, which is the company that patented this process. So, Tom Wharf would not be in the retail fertilizer business, but we would be in the wholesale fertilizer business. ECM 4A, which is the biogas cogeneration system, the cogent engine, to utilize the gas that comes off our digesters. Currently, we utilize a small fraction of it. The vast majority of it is flared because we cannot currently put it to beneficial use. This would correct that. Closely coupled to that is the digester dome repair. In order for us to capture the gas to put it to beneficial use, we must have, we have two of our five methane-phase digesters have leaking lids. That particular item is in the CIP anyway, it's in the Tom Wharf five-year-approved CIP to get repaired, but it makes sense, if council should choose to move forward with the Amoresco project, to add that to the project to essentially provide unit responsibility, one contractor working on the entire system. Similarly, ECM 6, dewatering upgrades, new centrifuges, new cake pumps, pipes, associated valves and piping, and so on. Two, that would manifest in savings in a number of different ways. A drier cake, which means lower volume, which results in fewer trips to landfill, which is less energy cost to haul it there, and lower tipping fees, as well as the equipment itself being more energy efficient. It would just flat-out use less electricity than the centrifuges and cake pumps that we currently have. As a reminder, the equipment in our dewatering circuit is about 35 years old. It's at the end or near the end of its service life. It's going to have to be addressed anyway. By, the Amoresco project not only addresses the dewatering equipment, but does so in a manner that produces some savings for us. ECM 7, the lighting upgrades, replacing the lighting fixtures we have around the plant with some energy-efficient fixtures. And one of the questions that was raised previously in discussions with council was the nature of these particular fixtures. Many of them, because they're in a corrosive environment, have to be corrosive-resistant fixture, otherwise its service life would be substantially reduced. They are more expensive than what you would expect to put in a regular office building lighting upgrade. But functionally, it's just replacing energy inefficient fixtures with better fixtures. Finally, ECM 9, the near-term dewatering improvements. This is flat-out a capital improvement project. It was ready to go to bid to replace the polymer system and the electrical controls in the dewatering building. It was held in abeyance of this project. It makes sense to incorporate it, again, unit responsibility, have a single contractor working on the dewatering circuit. Should council choose to act favorably upon the Amoresco project, we would have a single contractor performing all of the repairs. So, that project was ready to go to bid in December of 2012. It's in hold in abeyance, awaiting the conclusion of this. And finally, my Energy Pro ECM 10, that's actually not an energy conservation measure. And finally, MyEnergyPro ECM 10, that's actually not an energy conservation measure, that is a program that has been tailored to Tom Wharf to validate the savings. So once constructed, we have a 15-year relationship with Amoresco where every year we would have to establish whether or not the savings materialized. MyEnergyPro is the system that does that, that each year we would validate whether or not we made the $1.1 million in savings, and if not, there would be repercussions, and if so, then we would happily move along our way. I apologize for the busyness of this slide, and I couldn't quite figure out how not to present what you have here, but these are the construction costs and projected savings for each of those ECMs. A brief reminder, the construction cost is a guaranteed maximum cost, so Amoresco is saying, "We can build this for this at no more than this amount." Anything that comes in under, the cities retain that difference. You see in the lower right corner of the slide, the payback periods. So there are components of this project that are in the Amoresco contract that exclude the cogent plus the two capital improvement projects that I previously identified. That has a 13-and-a-half-year payback. When we add the cogent to it, that has a 15.4-year payback. This is simple, divide the total amount of money we spend building it by the annual, the guaranteed minimum annual savings, it's a simple calculation. The total payback is over 20 years, and that's because we've included two items from our CIP that have no direct financial impact to the plant, but we've included them in the Amoresco project for convenience. That, of course, when you divide the total number, the $24.9 million, by the $1.1 million annual savings, that's what results in the 21.2-year simple payback period. So there's the number, the $21.9 million in total projects, of which 7.8 million would be City of Sparks' responsibility, the balance to our partner, the City of Reno. The guaranteed minimum annual savings, $1.122 million. We are projecting a savings of 5.8 million kilowatts of energy per year. That would be in direct production of energy through the cogent system or reduction in the usage of energy through more efficient systems and newer equipment. So the net is that value in kilowatt-hours of savings. 29,000 gallons of methanol in the reduced, in the denitrification reactor, we use methanol, we would reduce the usage by approximately that much. Currently, methanol sells for about 2 and 1/4 a gallon, but it is a tight market, and there's a lot of volatility in the price. It's been in the high 3s, it's been in the low $1 price range, so we've assumed a price of approximately today's market price, that would be actual realized savings in gallons. Dry tons in alum, that's just a process improvement, reduces our chemical consumption with a direct bottom-line benefit to the plant. A non-financial benefit, but something that's huge for us, is operational reliability. As I mentioned earlier, the dewatering circuit is about 35 years old, it is at the end of its service life. We are going to have to address it anyway. By doing it through the Amoresco project, we get it done in a single project with unit responsibility from a single contractor. The three ECMs I see, show listed here, 6, 9, and 4B, are the three that directly affect the dewatering circuit. The nutrient recovery, in addition to the financial benefit, there would be approximately $140,000 in revenue of selling the fertilizer per year, wholesaling it to Ostera. But additionally, we receive a non-financial benefit of removing a tremendous amount of the phosphorus from the centrate stream prior to returning it to the main treatment process. Currently, we pre-treat it before it goes back into the treatment process because it is so concentrated. We would replace the current pretreatment with the Ostera reactor as the pretreatment step. It would also remove approximately 7% of the nitrogen from that centrate stream prior to returning it to the main treatment process. Finally, the electrical cogeneration would produce 850 kilowatt-hours of electricity for the generator running at 100% of the time. That's approximately 1/3 of our base load and approximately 1/4 of our peak load, so it's not going to get us off the grid, but it's a big first step. Other non-tangible benefits, we've always had, the city manager, Mr. Carey, has had a vision to get the treatment plant off the grid. Wastewater treatment plants use approximately 1.5% of all energy produced in this country. They're very energy-intensive. So this is, again, this is not going to get us 100% of the way there, but it's a big first step. Local jobs and economic support. Amoresco has promised that 75% of the work to be done in this project, should council choose to move forward with it, would be local equipment suppliers, local union houses, local subcontractors to provide the work. 25% of it would come from out of the area. And finally, leveraging our capital expenditures, as I mentioned a couple of times, our dewatering circuit is at the, near the end of its service life, it's going to have to be addressed. This is a way that we can pull some work from future years into the current year, get it done quickly, and unit responsibility, big for us, and get, and return us to that reliable state that we'd like to be in. So should council choose to move forward, there would be a two-year construction period. Some things would move much faster than others. The lighting upgrades could go to construction tomorrow. The dewatering circuits, because they are part of our main core business, our main process, the plans would have to go to 100% design and be reviewed by the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection before we could start construction. The cogent sits in the middle, it affects our process, but it is not a process, so NDEP would like some review, but would not have to wait for the 100% design. After that, there'd be a commissioning period, and for example, the Ostera reactor, we'd have a one-year period where Ostera would work with us to ensure that the product we're producing meets the specifications for a marketable product. As an aside, this reactor currently exists in a plant up in Portland. Reno engineering staff and Tom Wharf staff visited the Portland facility twice, discussed this with the operators, with the management of that plant, no challenge meeting the specification, we don't have any concerns in that regard. Finally, we would then have a 15-year relationship with Amoresco where every year we would validate the savings, and there would be a true-up at the end of every year. So at this point, that is the conclusion of the financial audit which I'm presenting to you today. This is the deliverable of the contract that you issued approximately 16 months ago. And so for the first, for agenda item 6.3, all I'm asking for you to do is, excuse me, I apologize, sir, agenda item 6.4, all I'm asking you to do is to accept this audit as the deliverable from that contract.
Okay, questions on 6.1?
Okay, Ms. Ratty. Yeah, thank you. Don't want to forget it again.
Do you accept the financial grade operation?
Oops, wait a minute, I got a public comment, I'm sorry, do you? Mr. Townsend? Come on down.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Paul Thompson, and I am the Director of the Governor's Office of Energy and the Governor's Energy Advisor.
Sorry. I said Townsend, Thompson, I'm sorry.
That's close. Good company. I spell it a little funny. I want to thank the mayor, the council, and the acting city manager for the opportunity to testify today. The Governor's Office of Energy has three major priorities, and those are the development of renewable energy, the transmission of that energy out of state, and the implementation of energy efficiency projects. And that's why I'm here today, to really comment on this project. As many of you are aware, most government facilities can actually reduce their energy consumption by 25 to 50% or more. And this is, as you heard previously, a great project that does that. Performance contracting offers a funding opportunity that overcomes this barrier. The State of Nevada and the Governor's Office of Energy have laid a foundation for this, as you heard in the NRS, and we've also put together a performance contract audit assistance program through the Governor's Office of Energy to help fund these audits as they go forward, so we really are encouraged by this example. I just wanted to commend Sparks and Reno for considering this policy, and say that this project is a fantastic collaboration between the two cities to potentially save $1.1 million annually and reduce your energy consumption by close to half of a megawatt. That's huge. And I just wanted to comment that this tremendous opportunity helps you not only manage energy budgets, but to upgrade and modernize facilities, reduce taxpayer burden of the growing government energy budgets, and incorporate the use of renewable energy and create jobs right here in Sparks. So with that, I just want to thank the council for the opportunity to speak here today. I hope this project inspires other municipalities and other public entities to follow in your footsteps and use government dollars more wisely to modernize facilities and enhance environmental stewardship. And if any of those entities are listening, I would encourage them to reach out to the Governor's Office of Energy, and have support to walk them through the initial stages of what it takes to get to this far along in the performance contracting process. And again, we have this audit assistance program for those public entities that are looking for support in getting to this point to consider such fantastic projects. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Paul, thank you for showing up today, we appreciate it. Anybody have a question for Paul or anything? Paul, again, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Ms. Ratty.
I move to accept the financial grade operational audit for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility.
Mr. Lawson.
I just have a comment and a couple of questions before we move along here.
Okay, can we get a second, Mr. Carrigan?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Carrigan, discussion, Mr. Lawson.
Is, Michael, in the statute, is the 15-year contract part of the statute?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was, that was my major question. The unintended consequences, I think, are huge here, so I'm a little leery about this whole process. It all sounds too good to be true, and my experience tells me that that's not good.
Go ahead, Ms. Ratty.
For the purposes of this agenda item, all we're doing is accepting the audit and not committing to any of the contracting?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Let's move on to 6.5, consideration of possible approval of the performance contract for energy cost savings with Amoresco Inc. for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. Go ahead, Mike.
Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plan Manager. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you the contract that is the result of the financial grade operational audit. This would be the construction contract. Approval of this, we would be underway to build those improvements that were listed in the presentation I just gave.
Questions for Mike? Mr. Carrigan.
Mike, did they, Reno already approved this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing is, I think, hasn't Reno already used this company before to do their ass, the assessment of their city?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that was pretty successful?
Yes, Mr. Geddes from the City of Reno is here, if you have deeper questions.
Jason, why don't you come, yeah, just give us, if you wouldn't mind putting it on the record how they did.
Good afternoon, Jason Geddes, Environmental Services Administrator for the City of Reno. Yes, Mr. Carrigan, we did use this company previously for the City of Reno project. In that project, we ended up going out and doing about $19 million worth of work. We did it with the same 15-year guarantee. They, in our project, it was guaranteed to pull in $1.2 million a year. We actually threw in a couple extra projects that we got through ground from the Energy Office and the energy rebates, and we're currently saving $1.7 million a year. And we've gone, May will be year two of our 15-year agreement, so we've been covering what was guaranteed, and the rest is sitting in the general fund. We did go out to bid again to give everybody an opportunity on this, we didn't just go with the company there, but they, as Mr. Drinkwater said, they ended up being the winning bidder.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
I'm going to wait.
Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Just want to make sure that the, for the record, I understand the process that we go through. One is, we have, back in August 2012, we put out an RFP, we had seven people apply, and we selected a contractor or an engineer to come in and write the book, write the plan. And we paid for his service for that.
Yes, sir.
And how much did we pay for that?
It was $140,000.
$140,000. So much like we would do for an engineer to come and do an energy audit, and once we paid that $140,000, we own the book.
Yes, sir.
Right? But in this case, we don't own the book.
In respect, if I understand the question correctly, I believe we do. This is information that we pay for, that we own, that we could do with, as we please.
So we could stop right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So now, the portion that has me concerned, that I'm concerned about, is the $25 million. You don't have anything to publicly bid that out, say that for the work we're doing for $25 million, we're still paying that cost, 100% of that cost, right? Contractors not paying a portion of that for any cost sharing or anything else like that?
Correct.
Or the citizens are paying 100% with no competitive bidding going on.
With no public bidding process, that's correct, sir.
So, and the only guarantee to the public then is that they're going to get at least a million won in savings for their $24 million investment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have something to say, Jason? Go ahead.
May, Jason Geddes, City of Reno. Just clarify that, they do have to bid everything out and follow all of the contracting requirements, prevailing wage requirements in 338, but similar to a construction manager risk project, they're the ones who are taking on the risk, and they do the bidding, so it wouldn't be a public bid in each aspect of that. But, yeah, they're doing the bidding, and they do a bid process to select the quotes that generated the project we have before us.
Then do we have a requirement, at least three bids in every category?
We don't have a requirement for three bids, we ask them to get three bids where there are companies available to get the three bids.
That's my concern, that's my concern. Anytime you, anytime you take and stifle competition, you take the opportunity that you're going to pay a lot more for a product than you do if you have competition. And that's why closed bidding with taxpayer dollars is always a high, high risk. Unless you've gone through and you've dotted your i's, crossed your t's, minimum of three prices in every category that's on out there, if you can't get that third bid or that second bid, then you have a process to go through to make sure that those prices are, you know, competitive, and that's my concern. You know, I've seen guaranteed maximum contracts before, been in the business for 30 years, I know how they work. And, you know, sometimes they're a really, really, really bad deal, and I think that's where, you know, my concern lies. And I'm not going to stop the project, I'm going to go ahead and let it go through, because we're already so far down the line, and we've got stuff that we've been on hold for two years that should have been done two years ago, and we can't, you know.
We're down the line, yeah.
So I voiced my concern through this whole process, that I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair, it's right, I don't like the 21-year payback period of time. There's nobody out there doing economic, you know, cost savings, energy-saving projects with 21-year payback, and I think that that payback is built into the way we do things, we can't drive that price down. So that's my concerns.
And Mr. Schmidt, if I may, the other thing we have in here that is an assurance is, we do get what's called open-book pricing. So all of the subcontractor prices that come in, the equipment, what they're paying, how they're putting it in, is all built into that Chapter 5 of the financial grade audit that you have, and we actually have all those available so that we can see all the contractors who are on the project, what they priced it at, and know what's out there. And the second component of that is, NRS 332 requires a third-party audit, so we actually went out and hired a third-party to go out, to look at what they submitted into their project, and evaluate all the way through that project, and basically, they're another set of eyes to look at it, and they validated that the projects and the pricing and what is brought forward have been reasonable and is considered acceptable. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson.
So I'm looking for loopholes here, so this $25 million investment, that's our only investment, and we're going to realize the $1.1 million savings over 15 years?
Yes, sir.
So there's not anything in there that we're going to have to invest an additional $5 million, $10 million here or there to maintain that savings level?
That's correct. There, let me restate it, there is nothing in there that would, there's no future, anticipated future investment to maintain this savings level. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Carrigan.
I move to approve the performance contract for energy cost saves with Amoresco Inc. for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Second, Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve 6.5. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.6, consideration of possible approval of the 15-year ongoing services agreement with Amoresco Inc. in the amount of $39,845 for one year with an annual inflation rate of 2.38% thereafter. Mr. Drinkwater, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So we have before you is the contract that defines our relationship with Amoresco for the 15 years that they are guaranteeing the savings. Now, there's a fee associated with this, but this fee has also been netted out of the savings, so we get, we've already accounted for this before the $1.122 figure was arrived at, so essentially, it's included, it's already been captured by, prior to establishing the guaranteed minimum savings. But this, this relationship, our ongoing relationship with Amoresco, this is the document that defines that.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So $40,000 a year for a company to tell us that we're meeting all of the benchmarks that they set.
Well, one caveat, we did, we arrived at the benchmarks together, but yes.
But they set the benchmarks, they are going to write the report, we pay them to write the report that says that they met their own benchmarks. Isn't this a, wouldn't this be the great third-party verification system, the third-party out there? The third party out there verifying that Party A and Party B is doing what they're supposed to do, instead of Party B getting paid by Party A to tell Party A that they're doing, Party B's doing what they're supposed to have done?
Jason's gonna help me out with this one again.
Jason Geddes, City of Reno. It's a combination. Within that price is the ongoing MyEnergyPro, and what that MyEnergyPro software is, is a software database that'll be at Tom Wharf, that will track the energy savings and the chemical and cost savings as we go, and the way, you know, we'll look at it weekly, monthly, however we need to, to make sure we're on track at the 1.12, and then they have a person at their office who's also looking at that and monitoring to make sure that the ECMs are coming in place, so they are paying for that. The third-party review is our side, to look at the numbers, the plant staff, City of Reno staff, every year to look at that M&amp;V report and make sure we are getting those savings in the actual cost, and really, the bottom-line dollar amount. And that third-party that looked at this and validated this, we'll hire a third-party at the end of construction to say, you should be getting all these numbers, and make sure everything was put in place, and that those savings will be there. But this is the annual maintenance of the software and generating that annual report, and then a physical look that things are as they said they were.
I think that validates my point, there should be a third-party person out there that does this work. You should not ever have somebody standing there doing the monitoring, saying everything's fine, and when they're getting paid to say everything's fine. They're getting paid to do that. You know, this is where your third-party should be on out there saying, yeah, we've monitored it, we've set this information to them, they can tabulate it or not, whatever they wanna do with it, but a third-party out there saying, what do you do if you, I mean, are we paying another, let me just ask you first, so we pay them to go and come back with the numbers? Are we paying somebody else also to review their numbers to make sure they did the right thing?
We are not. We are reviewing those numbers with them, with what they submit. We're providing them the numbers to our utility bills and our chemical bills, and then we're reviewing the report with them, so city staff will be that look.
Yeah, I just look at this whole thing, and if somebody's on the outside looking in going, there's a whole lot of questions here. This, you know, this is not a really clean, clean scenario. There's a lot of questions. An average person will look at this and say, interesting, what's going on here?
Questions, Ms. Ratty?
Yeah, I guess I see it perhaps a little bit differently. I don't see this as the auditing of the project, I see this as the project management. So, it's the tools and the relationship that we need to manage the project moving forward. It is a partnership with one entity, and that is unusual. I guess I don't think people are gonna be looking at it and saying, that's weird what's going on here. I think it's innovative, frankly. It's a way to achieve some capital improvement gains while also achieving some environmental sustainability gains, and NRS allows us a unique relationship to make that happen. So, again, I don't see this as the auditing of it, so if I'm off-base here, to me, this is more the project management tracking so that we can get to the place where that key milestone is there's staff review and third-party audit. Is that correct?
Well, there's the third-party audit at the end of the project. After that, yeah, it is the ongoing maintenance and verification as to the project is working, and providing staff with the numbers that they can go through this. I got our first report on our project, the City of Reno was completed in May of '12. We got the first report back in, and basically, I sat there with their staff person, and we went through numbers and validated numbers, and found where things had shifted from what we had agreed to, and where we needed to make corrections in the project, that we could get things back on track. And just an example is, when we replaced the bulbs in the Reno Arch, we had calculated so much energy savings, and it was a really simple project, since it was just light bulb changes, but we weren't getting the savings that we had. And we called back into the MyEnergyPro and looked through the system, and found that we basically had outlets on the arch, and the vendors during special events were plugging into the outlets, and so we were spiking on weekends, and we were able to go in and basically put a lock on those outlets, and then see that we were achieving what we proposed to achieve.
I think you just may have answered my second question, but that was gonna be my question. Is it typical in these types of agreements that the state has allowed to have this kind of a management fee?
Yes. It's anticipated in the law, and it's put into the law to have this annual M&amp;V true-up, and really, at the end of the project, when we see what it's looking like, we can make changes in it. Some cities do a one, three, and then every five years. We basically, for our Reno project, we scaled it back so that we are getting a shorter look every year, because we're watching the MyEnergyPro on the weekly and monthly basis.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, further questions, motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the ongoing services agreement for operating cost-saving measures with Amoresco Inc. for the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Carrigan to approve 6.6. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.7, consideration and possible approval of the by-product removal agreement with Ostera USA LLC for initial 15-year period. Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, excuse me. So, this document before you defines our relationship, ongoing relationship with Ostera. Once the fertilizer production is underway, how we will deliver the product to them and how we will be paid. And it also defines the specifications of the type of product we have to produce and what chemically and physically it must look like and so on, and so that we can deliver to them a financially viable product, and then how they're going to weigh it, and then remit the money to the City of Sparks.
Okay. Questions on 6.7, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Is there a market that you can follow, that a person can go and pull up and say what this product is worth on a daily, weekly, monthly basis? So, how do you know? You gotta guarantee it $250, but how do you know what your product is worth for the next 15 years?
I do not, and the reason is, it's not, in and of itself, it's not a very viable product, because it is so rich in phosphorus. Typically, a fertilizer has to be blended with nitrogen and potassium before it becomes a viable product, so we have raw materials that are ultimately useful, but in and of themselves, not so much. So, and the vast majority, I'm sorry, Mr. Schmidt.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The vast majority of the savings, I remind you, in this particular ECM is a reduction in chemical usage, and not so much the revenue from the fertilizer, although that certainly is a component, so we're more concerned about the former than the latter.
$250, $250 a ton, that's what we're saying it's worth, that's what we're guaranteed to have. What's it worth? It's a commodity. I mean, it's, there has to be a way to track a price and say, if thing's worth $1,000 a ton, you're losing a whole lot of money. And you're locking yourself in for 15 years with no mechanisms to go and decide how that product, what, again, you have somebody else telling you, I guarantee you $250 a ton for it, and that's what I'm gonna pay you for the next 15 years, but by the way, that stuff now is $1,000 a ton. Thank you very much, you know, we made some money. Where is there the ability to monitor that process?
In this particular relationship that's not anticipated, we're looking at the savings on the chemical reduction side more so?
I guess it's like saying, if, you know, you're happy with your salary today, you're happy for the next 15 years with it?
Yes, and your point is well-taken, sir, and what we're looking at is mostly, as I said, the chemical reduction and the reliability in removing the phosphorus, that's the non-tangible benefit for us. The, we choose, previously, this process was tested at Tom Wharf approximately six years ago, and at that point, the relationship required us to be in the retail business, and that's not our core business.
I agree with you 100%. You know, I, this is the best way to go, to get rid of a product that costs us money to get rid of, and we're gonna make money on it. We're creating a product, and I don't know how many tons a year here we're gonna use this.
Sir.
If I took that same product and put it in storage for the next 10 years, what would my product value be? What's the market for this going to? What, you know, and it's, basically, the questions you would do before any investments or signing any contract is, who's making the money here? And, you know, if you don't know what you're, it's like selling your house, you know? You don't know what your house is worth, take any old thing for it. You might've got a good deal, and you might not have. Chances are, you're probably not gonna get a good deal if you don't know what your product's worth.
So, they take the same risk if it goes to $50 a ton, right?
Yes, absolutely, but I'd like to know where.
So, let's store it for 10 years, it goes to 50, that's the gamble that you've taken, is it not? Plus, the main thing here, this is not what we're trying to get to, is making money on this, things that we have to get rid of, we're just trying to get rid of it as cheaply as we can.
My question is, why would you enter into a 15-year contract to sell a product that you don't even know what it's worth today?
Jason Geddes, City of Reno, Councilman Schmidt. The one thing, as Mayor pointed out, is it is a solid price, so if the bottom drops out as well, we're getting our $250. But the key to us in this relationship is the fact that Amoresco is guaranteeing the overall cost savings from the project, of which this is a factor. We are a wholesaler for the phosphorus. If the retailer, if it's not at no value, then the retailer does stand to benefit more than we would, but we are building it into the process based on that base rate and guaranteeing it at that base rate.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Ratty?
Isn't this very similar? I mean, I know the mechanics are different, because we're not talking about a specific kind of contracting, we're talking about a franchise, but to me, this is no different than the relationship that we have with waste management and recycling. You know, they give us a rate that they're going, we're gonna pass on to consumers to pay for their service, and some were factored into that rate, is how much they can sell recyclables for. It's a commodity, that market goes up and down, they have to make an assumption based on whether it's a good year for that commodity or a bad year for that commodity, but we get guaranteed a certain price. To me, this is exactly the same thing, it's a set of, it's, you're trading potential profit or potential loss for certainty over a 15-year period. And in this case, since it's something we had to pay to haul off before, a waste product, I'm perfectly happy to get $250 per ton that we weren't getting before, and have some certainty over that 15 years to achieve the overall project, which is what we're trying to accomplish here today. Is any of that incorrect?
Sounded correct to me, yes.
Mr. Carrigan?
I'm ready to make a motion, but I was gonna basically bring up the fact that if we sell it for $250 a ton, we still have to get rid of 560 tons a year, wouldn't we?
Yes, sir.
Unless we stack it on site, isn't that correct?
Correct. We have to get rid of it either way.
Right, and before, we've been paying for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Take it to Yucca Mountain, maybe.
So, I'm ready to move to approve the by-product removal agreement with Osters USA.
Ms. Ratty? Moved by Councilman Carrigan, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve 6.7, is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed as 4 to 1, Mr. Schmidt is a no. 6.8, consideration and possible direction to initiate amendments to the Title 13 regarding environmental control, pretreatment, stormwater management, septic receiving, effluent, and other sections as necessary. Mr. Hummel?
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Andy Hummel, Utility Manager for the City of Sparks. This item before you today, we're asking permission to take a look at Title 13. Title 13 is generally the code for water, sewer, storm drain, and effluent usage within the City of Sparks. I have a lot of different things we need to look at in there to ensure that we're remaining compliant with regulations from EPA, from the state level, from NDP, things like that. Basically, make sure that we're in compliance with laws that are out there, so that we're not missing something that could get us or our citizens in trouble. We don't anticipate impacts from a fee standpoint, user classes with our industrial users. We may have some fee adjustments on the septic receiving side at Tom Wharf, that's a project they're working on now, to change how they receive that septic out there. With that, we may need to look at how those costs are recovered, make sure that anything that's, you know, not coming in from a residence or business, this is generally septic coming in from a septic tank, things like that, so. It's general cleanup, things like that, to make sure code is in compliance. With that, if there's any questions, be happy to address.
There is a question, Ms. Ratty?
Yeah? I was just confused by this, as I was reading it, is this in relationship to the Amoresco project, or this is broader than that?
Oh, no, it's separate.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, this Title 13 for effluent, does it include rates in there?
Yes, rates are within Title 13.
So, could you take a look at, maybe, you know, I know that probably, we're not using as much effluent as we have in the past, and therefore dumping it in the river, we might wanna take a look at lowering some of our rates, or maybe giving it away for free? Sorry to say that, but rather than put it in the river?
Yeah.
You gonna take a look at that?
We could definitely take a look at that.
And I hate to use the word free, but whatever.
Yep.
Questions? Looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
I move to direct staff to put there and bring forward amendments to Title 13 regarding environmental control, pretreatment, stormwater management, septic receiving, effluent, and other sections as necessary.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve 6.8, is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.9, consideration and possible approval of the Alf Sorenson Natorium renovation project, bid number 1314-015. Ryan, go ahead.
Members of the council, for the record, my name is Brian Kason, Acting Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. I'm here to present the Alf Sorenson Natorium renovation project for consideration and possible approval to Frank Lepore Construction. They are a local contractor that has been around for a long time and has performed many projects for the city. There are six bids submitted for the project. Lepore Construction was within 5% of the low bidder, and has bidder's preference, therefore, since the low bidder did not have bidder's preference, the staff recommends Lepore Construction be awarded the project. The project will fix the primary project, or problem with the pool, which is the lack of ventilation in the roof. In addition to providing roof ventilation, the project will also remove and replace the ceiling, repair and replace walls, replace several windows and doors, upgrade the mechanical and electrical system, and replace existing lighting with LED lights. With that being the end of my presentation, I will answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ryan? Okay, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson?
I move to approve Alf Sorenson, I can't even say the word, renovation project, bid number 15.
Swimming pool.
The swimming pool. To Frank Lepore Construction, the amount of $721,544.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lawson, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to approve 6.9, is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Okay. 6.10, consideration, discussion, and possible action on the approval of an employment agreement between the City of Sparks and Stephen W. Driscoll for the position of city manager. Go ahead, Steve, real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Driscoll, acting city manager. For the record, I'll go ahead and present the overview, and then be able to answer any questions on the agreement that was reached between the mayor and myself regarding my future position. So, what you have in front of you is, in your February 24th meeting, you appointed a new city manager to replace Mr. Carrigan, his retirement, and part of the action from that agenda item was to negotiate an employment contract with the new city manager, which would be me. So, what you have in front of you is an agreement that was worked out with the help of the city attorney's office and the mayor, working on various issues. There are some slight differences from what you have seen in the past. Previously, the contract with the manager was a combination of an employment contract that had pieces of information on it, and specific benefits or duties that were assigned. And then the other part of the agreement was to go to the executive agreement and see the language that was there on various benefits and other things. With the help of the city attorney's office, we decided to make this a true employment contract, where all the terms and conditions, all of the things that are being provided by either of the two parties are defined in this agreement and this agreement alone. So, while things were cut and pasted from the executive agreement, everything's in here. So while things were cut and pasted from the executive agreement, everything's in here. So this agreement now stands on its own. So a couple of the changes from what you had in the past. One of the main things was, the previous contract had a two-year timeframe on it that, you know, based on any action from the council or the mayor, really didn't mean anything once the 90-day period of time was over. There was no payment till the end of the second period, there were no obligations. And so with the help of the attorney's office, what we decided to do is to make this a one-year contract, actually because we're so close to the beginning of fiscal year, make this first contract a 15-month contract going from April 4 and running through to June 30 of 2015. By being an annual contract, two things will happen when the council does periodic review, which in here is defined as doing performance review no later than May 15 of the fiscal year. At that time, the council would determine whether they were going to renew or not renew the contract of the manager at that point. That would, that would trigger if there was renewal, it would just go through and drive itself forward. If there was non-renewal, then that would stimulate a separation clause, which has six-month monetary consequences to it. Also part of that, if for any reason, annual review was not done between the May 15 date and June 30, if no formal action had been taken by the manager to renew or not renew, the contract would automatically renew for a year on July 1 if no action had been taken by the council. The council in this, in this contract would have the ability to terminate for, without cause, at any time, as they would with cause, obviously. But with a contract terminated for no cause, without cause, it just requires 90 days written notice. That can happen at any time, it doesn't have to wait for the end of the contract. Then it would, in this case, it would trigger a separation clause, a similar six months as you would for non-renewal. The manager will be required to give 90 days written notice, kind of the same notice that the council would give for non-renewal, if the manager was looking to separate on his own accord. If the manager triggers a separation, then there is no severance from that standpoint. The two other things that are kind of important in this that are a difference, in your, in your current contract, the manager upon separation was able to cash out 100% of his sick leave dollars that he accumulated and could just take that money and do what he wanted. He could go buy his own medical benefit, he could continue to buy medical benefit from the city, or frankly, he could just go on vacation with that money, whatever the case may be. That has been taken out of this agreement. What is in this agreement is similar to the executive agreement currently, that if you have, upon termination, the employee has two choices. They could commit 100% of their sick leave balance at their then-current rate, and it can go into a non-interest-bearing paper account, if you will, and it can pay for medical payments for the employee and whatever the dependent status is for as long as that money lasts. The second thing is there, in the, in the current executive agreement, is a cash buyout that allows you to, upon separation, that you could, instead of the sick leave conversion, you could cash out a certain number of hours at 50% of the value for the, for the number of hours that are there. And in this case, this agreement is using a 2,500-hour cap for 50% cash out, if a cash out was done. So with that, I'm prepared to answer any other questions about the agreement. Any, any, you know, detailed information, I'll do the best I can to run numbers if we need to run numbers.
Mr. Lawson. I have a question on Section 2B. The city will match 100% of manager's contribution to a deferred compensation program or up to the maximum contribution as limited by the federal law. Does that mean that Steve Driscoll, being independently wealthy, can put $190,000 into savings and we have to match that?
No, sir. The federal law right now is at $22,500 per year for a person over the age of 50. And so what this benefit does, it allows me to contribute $11,500, and the city matched that $11,500 for the total of $22,500, which is the federal maximum. Thank you.
Ms. Rady.
Two questions. I just wanted to clarify that we wouldn't need to do a evaluation on May 15 of this year?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And then, secondly, on the choice between a sick leave conversion or a 50% cash payout, do both parties have to agree, or is that something you choose one way or another?
It is the employee's choice that when they separate, they get, they get two choices. They can do one or the other, they cannot do a combination of the two options.
That's what's currently in our executive resolution.
That's very, that's pretty much what happens in all the collective bargaining and non-collective bargain agreements now, for those employees who have a cash out option. It's their choice at the end. They have one time up, they can choose to do sick leave conversion, or they could choose to do a buyout.
But only at that point? Only at the point of separation?
Only at the point of separation. There are some employees that, based on agreements that happened in the past, they did not get sick leave conversion at the end, but they are allowed to do cash buyout of sick leave benefit in certain dollar amounts at certain times a year. That only applies to a small number of people, it doesn't apply here. So in this case, upon separation, if you approve this contract, it would be the employee. My option, I'd pick one or the other, but not a combination of the two.
Thank you.
Carrigan.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Steve, this is nothing personal, but this is the question I have to ask, because to me, it's, it's, there's no room, as far as salary goes, for growth, as far as I'm concerned. Because how did we come up with $190,000 as initial salary? That's only 6,000 less than the city manager who has been here 14 years makes. If you add up longevity and your pay, that's only 3,700 difference.
That's a great point, Mr. Carrigan, thank you for the question. In situations like this, normally, when a person is moving from a management position to a much more senior management position, 10% to 15% promotion is not unusual in the city or in the industry. In looking at those numbers and understanding that Mr. Carey had been here for quite a while and very successfully running, and that at the same time, I had been at his side for the same 15 years and running and knowing a lot of the things, that it made sense that I should not be at his salary level. And so in those discussions, the mayor was comfortable with something that was less than a 10% promotion, in this case, nine, and that would put, put me underneath what the manager was at this point. Theoretically, the dollar amount could stay at 190 for perpetuity. There is no defined range, so there is no automatic increase in six months or a year that's a merit that we have with a lot of our other positions for the city. The only way under this contract and future contracts, if it was to be worded the same, the mayor and the council would have to determine that a pay increase was warranted for this position. And at that point, it would begin to affect the comparabilities with other organizations that we would compare ourselves with for this level. It would take into effect my performance, and it would take into effect the economics of the city. And so therefore, any increase would be at the sole discretion of the council for this or any of other future contracts. So it just, at the time and kind of working the numbers, it was something that the mayor was comfortable with as a promotion percentage, and I was willing to accept that.
Well, of course you are. I would have too, but I'm not comfortable with it. Then the problem is, for me, as a steward of the, you know, the cash box here for the city, to go tell somebody that you just got a $15,000 or more, you know, raise for a year, when basically, you as an assistant city manager, from what the questions I asked at the, at the meeting, were doing just about everything that Sean is doing, except that you're not designated the city manager. So my, my problem is, there's nowhere, I mean, you know, we give you 190,000, and why is your long, have you been here longer than Sean? Is that why you get 5,000?
That was, no.
Okay, so how did that work out? Because here's my problem, Steve. When you add it all up, we have a city manager that's leaving, that's been here 14 years, okay? And you're gonna step in as a brand-new city manager and make $3,700 a year total less than he is, and I have a problem with that.
Two things. I'll answer your first question about longevity. The manager had the ability to negotiate with this, with this in previous councils on different numbers at different times for different reasons. Part of that negotiation created the salary differential between the assistant and the department heads in his position. That was number one. Number two, he also had the ability to negotiate things, and at one point in time, there was a performance bonus that was well above $5,000 for the manager. That didn't work out very well, it was very difficult to determine, it, especially when we went into economic hard times, it worked itself out. And from that standpoint, he put on the table, and the council accepted, a $2,500 longevity fee. He recognized that was half of what was going to the executive team, but he was willing to do that because he had negotiated a higher salary based on the risk of the job. So coming to the second half of your question, yes, I make, I make about $15,000 less than the 190 that's on here. I also am not, in my current position, at the same level of risk and responsibility, ultimately, the city manager has. So in my discussion with the mayor, it was recognized that as a promotion, there will be duties that I'll take on that I don't have today, except in an acting capacity, and that I will take on the whole risk of the job day one, regardless of the amount of experience that I bring to the table. And then my continued performance will be based on my satisfying the council and the performance measures that you set out and the goals and objectives that are there. And so with all things, this is a high-level job, it pays a lot of money, and it's a great, it's a great responsibility to do the things you need to do. And based on the number that was offered, I was willing to accept that number, knowing that I've taken on the amount of risk.
Yeah, of course, you know, you keep saying that, but of course you're gonna accept it. But my point is, that there's a guy that's been there for, doing it for 14 years, is getting, you're gonna make 3,700 less than him, I just don't see the equality in that. And then my last thing, maybe this for the city attorney, termination without clause, cause or with cause, what does it take to terminate the city manager as far as vote-wise? Because I was always understanding it took four out of the four.
You know, I, I could not give you that answer. I would, I would assume it would just be a simple majority.
Well, you know what? I've been, I've been here for a long time, and every time I brought it up, it was, including the mayor was in on the termination of the city manager, too. And it took three, three council people and the mayor. That's what I heard. So is, are we gonna, I like to see that in writing then, if it's just a majority vote. Chris, am I right or wrong? Well, you can veto it. Then, then it takes four, I understand that. But I think, I thought I read it somewhere else.
Three-fifths majority vote.
And the mayor?
May be removed by the mayor and a three-fifths majority vote.
Okay, so I was right. So it's the mayor and three of us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chris, what, what's that written in? Okay, thank you. So we don't need to put it in the contract, but I just want everybody to realize that.
My, are you done?
Yep, thank you.
My recommendation came from, you know, some of the things that Sean had Steve's not getting, and, you know, this is taking on a lot of responsibility. The biggest thing here is the risk that goes along with this job and a new job. I felt that was something that needed to be addressed, and that's why I was willing to. All due respect, Mr. Driscoll asked for 195. We agreed to after some negotiations back and forth at 190. So I think we did negotiate something that I felt I was, I was comfortable with. It's something that I think was deserved. And I think it's deserved because of the 14 years' experience Mr. Driscoll has, sitting right next to Mr. Carey the whole time. It's not like he's only been here a couple of years and hadn't learned a lot, but he's, he's acted in Mr. Carey's stead many, many times, under many, many emergencies and those kind of things. So that was my thinking of why he needed to be bumped up a little more than, and I agree with what Steve said. 10% to 15% is probably more in the realm of where things are or maybe were. This is different times. I thought maybe 15% or 195 was a little too much. And again, there's no salary range here, correct?
No, so there is not.
So there's, and we have to give you a raise in the future if there's gonna be a raise, so that's, those were my considerations when I, when we talked about this. Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Steve, some of my questions actually has to do with all three, with councilmen. I wanna, first, I wanna say that I think this contract is much better than the ones that I've seen in the past with the city manager. There's a lot of things taken out and changed, and I think that makes it a lot simpler and easier to go and do, so I appreciate you coming forward with this, with this contract. My understanding is that there is a range for the city manager, that that is a category, because we just did that less than a year ago. We redid the city manager's range because Sean was at the top already, and with the addition of the deputy city, assistant city manager and assistant, we went through the, and changed that classification. So there's, there should be a range for city manager right now.
Mr. Schmidt, through you, in the executive agreement where the mayor or the manager's job title currently exists and has a range with it, there is not a range, there's just a number. So while there may be ranges for the other department heads and assistants, the manager's is just a number, it's the number he currently has. That number is based on the generosity of the council, and so at any time, his current agreement allows, different than the executive agreement, the executive is based on the resolution that the council approves. The current agreement and this agreement both allow for at any time, the mayor and the council can change the manager's salary.
To me, this conversation goes to a much different problem, and not so much what your salary is. It's this theory that we tie all these things together, that somebody at one pay grade is at a certain level on a job, and then they move, and then everybody else along the line. So when one person decides to move, then it starts putting everybody out of balance. To think there's only, you know, 10% difference or 15%, whatever it is between you and a city manager, you know, that's, in theory, that's a problem to me. I mean, I'm not questioning the 190,000, that's what the mayor had negotiated, and I don't, I just don't think that the staff system material we use is a good one, it points to a problem overall that we're gonna find ourselves into repeatedly, you know, whether it's with you or with anybody else in, in the system. The second, the other two items that I have, both of which I can address, Councilman Ratty's issue with the, the negotiations of the contract in May, the verbiage in there that it's automatic on July 1, I have some, some problem with, because we don't get to set the agenda. And if I'm correct, the last three years, we haven't done Sean's contract till July and August. We haven't done it in June or May like, like we're supposed to, because he's got the extended, another year that's automatic. His goes way beyond the issue, so, you know, either we can put in, you know, the language in there that, you know, staff and everything will have that to the city council by May the 1st, to allow us to go ahead and go May and June, 60 days to cover that, four periods in case we have an issue. I would rather see that in there, that we'll have that contract in to the city council by May the 1, and if not, then we have to work on an extension or something else like that. But to say a contract's automatic when we don't have the ability to bring that to the council, you know, that would mean designated to one person on the council that you must request this, or somebody in the staff has to, and based upon history, we haven't done it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. If I could, it was the intent of the language on the May 15, that all of the work would be done, and it would be able to be available and ready to be put on the agenda no later than May 15. What this contemplates is, if the work has been done, and for whatever reason, the council doesn't take action when it's their duty to do so, that there is a point that come July 1, with an annual contract, there is no contract. And so the contemplation was that if we've given you the tools to do everything you can, if the council's not acted in a negative manner, then it's assumed that it's in a positive manner, because the negative manner is, you're being put on notice that we're not renewing contract, doing those things. So if there's been nothing, if it's been silent as to negativity, and the work has been done to allow you to act, and you choose not to act, and then there is kind of some type of, I don't want to use the word penalty, but there's some kind of repercussion from the standpoint that person's doing the job, they're not being told they're not doing a good job, it's the right time and place, and if you don't get to the paperwork, it rolls over. It's not dissimilar to what you do with your executives today, that there is a period that they have to be notified that their contract will be renewed or not renewed, and if it's not, if it's, if it's silent, then that's considered to be automatic renewal. That's very common in the types of business agreements that we have with our vendors and with our employees. And so that was our attempt to note that we would be done 45 days before that period, and for some reason, not in the control of the management team, but in the sole control of the council, and they hadn't said, "No, thank you," that it would assume that it's okay, and we would drive on, and the council still after that automatic renewal date has the ability to, if they're not satisfied, they can trigger the 90-day written notice of, you know, termination without cause at any point in time. So that's, that's kind of what the language contemplated, at least from the way the city attorney's eyes are going to work through it.
If we beefed up that area in there, that, you know, the penalty's not applied if staff does not get it to by May the 15th. If it was not to the council by May the 15th, then that provision doesn't apply, and that's where my concern in that language is. And then my last concern is back to councilman's loss, and I would, I would much rather have a dollar amount in there not to exceed than not to exceed another government body that I have no control over. You know, if we think that the federal government doesn't change their, their rules and regulations, especially with 401Ks, it's, you go to school every year just to try to keep up with what they're doing. I know some things right now that are out there on, on some stuff that I've never seen paperwork through our city on yet, on the things. So I would much rather say if it's, if it's, we know for the year it's $22,500, we make it not to exceed $11,250, you know, we're both accomplishing the same things, but there's protections in place that another government body doesn't change our rules on us. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I suspect you'll do the same thing. We didn't, we really haven't voted on a contract with Sean when it was due, because he's always a year out. He always had an extra bit of contract to give him a little job security, and I'm sure you'll be doing the same thing pretty soon. The $190,000 to me is a lot of money, but we have to remember that Sean hasn't requested a raise in the last five years. So he could, he could have been making a lot more than $196,000. So at the $190,000, I can support that.
And state your question again about one year out. We're going up for, Sean is always one year out. Steve won't always be one year out. He'll only be 45 or 90 days out.
To clarify again, if I might, by changing this from a two-year agreement, and at the end of the day, the two-year, it kind of, I guess, from your comment, Mr. Schmidt, it gave him that if you didn't do certain things at the end of the first-year cycle, he still was going to get paid for up to the next unless there was some other change.
Right.
And so appreciate that, and that was there. There wasn't any guarantees or comfort from the standpoint that if any time in the first year or into the second year, if there was any termination for cause, or there was some stated non-renewal at the end of a cycle, there wasn't anything there that provided anything except that the council could determine in the old contract language that you're being terminated as of this date, and even though that date was before the end of the two-year contract, there was no consequence. If I take my current contract and the way it's structured with the executive team, if I'm told sometime before November 30th, which is not, the November 30th is a hard date that says if the manager has not told you your contract's renewed on November 30th, your contract automatically renews for another 12 months, starting January 1. We're working a little bit in that concept here. The manager could have at any time told me as an individual, under my current contract, that I'm not going to renew your contract. He didn't have to, he just had to do it no later than November 30th. So I would only get whatever period of time that I get based on that agreement. Now, there's a severance package based on non-renewal in the executive agreement that gives a six-month period of time. It's assumed that if you're not working here and you have to go find something, that manager-level jobs, senior-level and manager-level jobs are few and far between. It's very hard to find one in six months anywhere, let alone within the state. So that's what's kind of contemplated, is that there's kind of a hard date, that there is reasonable information given as to whether or not your contract's going to be renewed or not. I was willing to shorten it up to 45 days, so that if we did on the May 5th, and if we put in the proper language that said the council would be in a position to, to do that because staff has done their work, and that on May 15th, let's say we use the hard date, that you as a council decided that, you know, it's been nice, but we're going to go do something else and consider this your, you know, the beginning of the 90-day notice that your contract's not going to be renewed, and it would be whenever the end of that 90-day period is, I'd be done, and I would only know that 45 days before the contract's over. I was comfortable to do that because of the nature of the job and to understand that. If it, the thing that I didn't like about the previous contract was you had a period of time, but there was no obligation on the city to pay the manager to the end of that contract, that two-year contract period, based on the annual renewal. So the council could terminate at any time, and there was no guarantee, and there was no severance package. So now what we've done is we've shortened the timeframe up, we've made it year-to-year, so that I have to perform, I have to meet your expectations, I have to satisfy the goals and objectives and the vision that you have, and I need to do that with the help of the staff, and I need to drive it forward. If I'm not performing, then you have a very short cycle that says, you know, with no less than 45 days before, by the end of the contract, that says, "Thank you very much, we're done. Consider this the first, the day of your 90-day notice. Your contract's not going to be renewed," and there's a severance package that drives off the back of it, and at any time from that point to the end of the 90 days, the council can say, "You know what? Hand, turn your keys in, we'll call you if we need you." It's really up to the councils to drive any kind of termination action that would happen. Having a shorter-term contract in today's world seems to make sense because of the types of projects that we work on.
Well, I guess my point is even if you're the director of the flood project or the RTC, we give you a five-year contract, we can terminate that contract anytime we want to.
Depends on the terms and conditions.
At the end, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean...
Some of those contracts have a payment till the end of the initial contract.
They usually have a severance package, which is unusual.
And some may have a severance package, it's something less than usual.
Mr. Ratty?
I read it, and I thought I understood it, and then we've had a couple of things here, so I'm not totally grasping. So the May 15th, the evaluation and the notice are tied into one action?
They can be, yes.
But do they have to be?
You do not have to be.
So what it actually says is that if we haven't done, it doesn't say that if we haven't done the evaluation. It says that if we haven't done the noticing, then it automatically renews?
The way it was contemplated with the language that was written is that if the review process had not taken place between May 15th and June 30th, and there had been no discussion as to the non-renewal or renewal of the manager, it would assume renewal, and the contract would renew for an automatic 12 months. The council retains the ability at any time during the contract or a renewed contract that with 90 days' notice that they can terminate the manager without cause or with cause, in either case.
So the way you just said that back to me, to me, the evaluation and the renewal of the contract are being tied together as one action, because if we, if we haven't talked about either, it automatically renews.
It's contemplated that the review process is the time and place to renew or not renew.
Correct. But I share a little bit of Councilman Schmidt's concern that a variety of factors, a workload on the HR department, absenteeism in the city council where we don't have a quorum. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why, for whatever reason, it seems like we habitually do not make that evaluation happen in the timeframe that it is allotted for. So I guess my question is, instead of having it automatically renew for a year, could we compromise and say it automatically, the contract stays in place until that evaluation and notice occurs? So if we're a couple of months behind or a couple of meetings behind?
If that's the pleasure of the council, what was intended with the language was to force action. It said that, you know, there's been a lot of different reasons, and Mr. Schmidt's absolutely right about the council should be in the position to make the decision no later than March, May 15th. What was contemplated is if, and the language was intended to say that, but it clearly doesn't, otherwise that wouldn't have been a point of discussion. What it was intended to deal with is that if there's various reasons that the council hasn't put any priority on it, and has not took it upon themselves to sit down and tell the manager that he's not doing a good job and therefore we're not renewing, there's an assumption in contract that he must be doing a good enough job, and so renewing it's not an issue. And so it really forces the action that says, "If you don't want to continue the raise, you said something needs to happen affirmatively and in writing. If you're okay with what's going on and it just rolls, then that's assumed okay, and you could always make it changed by formal action."
So I would be comfortable with all of that if it was not contingent on the evaluation, but was contingent upon the notification, if that makes sense, that we can put an agenda item that we want to continue the contract, because, I mean, let's just say that you're out ill. I mean, knock on wood, please let that not be the case, but if you were out ill, I could totally see where we would not do the evaluation but continue the contract, if that makes sense.
That's fine.
And, you know, so forcing an evaluation in a, in a short period of time when we may not have the wherewithal for a lot of reasons, it's not in action.
It would be very easy to put a short-term successor clause in this that states that if you get to the end of the contract and, you know, formal renewal or non-renewal has not been accomplished, that, you know, there is a 90-day contract extension, puts it back in, lets everybody get in a row. That's certainly easy to do. What we were trying to do is to generate some of the conversation we're having today about sometimes in the past, we've just kind of cruised along, and it wasn't of any importance, but by giving you the ability to have a shorter contract, to hold performance to be important, that it did make it incumbent upon the decision-makers to put some priority to the decision.
Yep.
So if you want to, if you'd like to have a short-term succession clause, the attorney's office can gen that up fairly quickly.
And I'm less concerned about the short-term succession clause, I was just an idea to solve it. I'm more concerned about separating the evaluation from the notification to continue the contract, because if there's, there could be, we should be able to simply continue the contract if we'd like to, based on our own individual experiences, but the act of going through a formal evaluation may be impeded by a number of different things, some of which we couldn't control, and so that's, that's the part that I'm concerned about.
We could separate that action and have it, and have renewal not be specifically tied to the mayor.
A formal evaluation.
The formal evaluation, which is what was intended with the language I have in front of you, but we can certainly work that out to your pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to bring up the fact that I asked Chris to read that out of the charter,
and she did, that everything we're talking about here is OBE anyway, because the mayor has the hammer here. If the mayor doesn't want to fire the city manager, he's got better than a veto, because first of all, if he says no, we can't override it. We could have five city council people want to fire you, and as long as the mayor says no, it's done. Okay? So I don't care if the contract's a year, five years, 10 years. The only thing you have to worry about is making sure that you don't piss off the mayor when he's in office, because then he's got to go out and find three of us to go along with him. That's all I'm saying. So he's got, it's better than a veto, because we can't override it as a council. So I always, and this is something I've been talking about since I've been on the city council, that the way the charter's written, then it makes no sense. It doesn't matter if your contract's, you know, you should have it as long as the mayor's here, because he's the one that appointed you. Because after that, what you have to worry about is if he doesn't get reelected, okay, then maybe the new mayor wants to get rid of you, then you've got a problem. If he stays in office and you keep him happy, then you don't have a problem. So that's your guarantee. And I mean, I don't think any other department head has that guarantee, because the department heads are at your discretion, so you could fire any one of those without anybody up here saying anything about it.
So you need a charter change.
Well, all I'm saying is we need a charter change if you want to do anything with the contract. Otherwise, the charter sits as it sits, and that is, it doesn't matter if it's a year, do you see my point? It doesn't matter if it's a year contract, doesn't matter if it's a thousand-year contract, as long as the mayor's happy with the job you do, there's nothing we can do as a city council to get rid of the city manager.
If I might, I might disagree slightly. I'll start with the department heads. Department heads' contracts are such that they're appointed by the manager, confirmed by the council. If I was to not do a renewal, or if I were to do some type of dismissal without cause, they have an appeal right to the council, as long as you do it within a certain period of time, and that takes a simple majority vote to either uphold or to uphold the manager or to override the manager. A simple three-five vote, a three-to-two vote would take care of that. My understanding of the voting powers on the city manager's position is that it is appointed by the mayor, it's approved with a three-fifths for approval, and that from a removal standpoint, it would be a four-fifths to remove.
No, you just, you just read it. It's the three plus the mayor. The mayor has the hammer. If the mayor says no, it's done. You're, you know, that's the point I'm trying to make. So that's why I never worried about, you know, how long Sean's contract was, because it had nothing to do with the city council. I mean, you know, and I think some other people felt the same way, is that once we, once we approve the city, you know, the mayor's appointment as a city manager, that's it. It's a done deal unless, unless the mayor wants it otherwise, and three of us.
It's not the way I've ever understood.
Okay. Chris, bring that down here and read that again.
He's exactly right. This is the way he's...
I think he probably is, but I didn't know that.
We've discussed it. So it's a moot point.
No, that's what I'm saying. So why should we argue about the length of a contract? Why should we even give you an eval, because it doesn't matter? Seriously? And I've been saying that.
And I might, I think I can clarify. Section 3.0, Chris Sierson, employing customer relations manager. Section 3.030, city manager removal. The city manager may be removed by the mayor and three-fifths majority vote of the city council, or by four-fifths majority vote of the city council without the vote of the mayor.
That's, your point is...
Okay, so my point's, okay, forget it. I retract everything I said, because I didn't think that was in there. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Thank you.
Did you just write that in there?
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
It's in crayons.
Mr. Lawson?
For me, all the timing really doesn't matter. The bottom line is if we're going to fire, we're going to fire you. Done with it, so...
My point on the two-year or five-year...
The timing, for me, doesn't really make that much difference. It would be nice if we had some control over it, and it said that it has to be in front of us prior to May 15th. If it doesn't, it doesn't, and no blood. Like I said, if we're going to fire you, we're going to fire you. Doesn't really matter when that time starts.
Starts as soon as we approve this contract. If we do, yes, exactly. You can be fired at any time after the contract starts, no?
I've been working that way since I was 18 years old.
Exactly. Ms. Ratty?
I work in the morning, I feel like I can do it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Just a question, is there, the items are discussed, are there anything on the table for changing or to leave it exactly the way the contract is sitting?
Yes, I would seek direction on your point before about just clarifying the language, even though it was intended that all of the staff work would be done such the council could do the annual review no later than May 15th. So if we need to put, with the help of the attorney's office...
That's right, that's right.
If we need to put some clarifying language to satisfy the council, that's certainly what was contemplated.
And are you okay with the dollar amount in the additional thing not to exceed, you know, for, instead of the federal statute?
I, what would be comfortable, if we're going to put hard numbers in, and it's the intent of the council to automatically increase if the federal government increases, and then if we put that language in, that's fine. If it's the intent that the council is going to hard code a number, and then is going to review the number in the future, I'm also comfortable with that.
And I think every year we're reviewing that number, that's part of your contract. I think that's something that HR can tell you, okay, it went to $30,000 this year, so we can change that number to $15,000.
Because that's, that's what has happened since this benefit has been, it's been around for more than 10 years for the executive team and the manager. The number has changed at least once that I'm aware of, and so it was just automatically went to the new federal number. We got divided in half, and the city put in dollar-for-dollar up to the maximum, and we were done, and the next year, when it went up, we put in dollar-for-dollar up until that goes.
So we're going to review every contract every year. I think it's a, it's a point that, you know, it's a, to me, it helps lock that in, so we know what the federal government's doing, and we know what the dollar is that we're going to be doing, but...
The one thing that is inconvenient, Mr. Schmidt, if I might, we would be reviewing contract in May-June, and the federal limit changes January 1, and you can only contribute up to, you can only do so much, and then you'd have, if it changed and the council hadn't changed it, then the employee would have to make a greater contribution in the second half of the year. Frankly, I'm comfortable with that, if that's the way to go.
Yeah, you've got to do it by December 31st. So I, you know, other than that, I see, you know, first off, again, I want to thank
you know, first off, again, I want to thank you for, I think it's, it's a better contract than I, I think we've had to deal with, so I, I thank you for that, and, you know, I'm willing to put--
Part of the pleasures of being your neighbor negotiator this morning drove me nuts.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I'm, I'm willing to put on, you know, to, a motion to go and approve the contract with, you coming back with the language on, you know, to make the May 15th date stick that it's, because I'm more interested in making sure it's here and done by July 1st. I don't want it, that's, that's my goal here, you know, is not to let this single be, be on July 1st, so, and then work out the language on putting a dollar amount for the 50%.
Prove it subject to?
Yeah. So, thank you, that's my motion.
And then clarification on the motion. Since this is subject to, you're not going to meet again before the April 4th date, would it be your intent to be subject to the approval of the mayor with the new language, based on the council's wants?
Yeah, I want to con, Mr. Mayor, I just, yeah, I want to put a contract in place.
Yeah.
I think, I think there's no, I don't think--
Your employment is, I mean, we're so close on the contract, I don't think it's a big deal here. I think we can get these little things worked on out, so you're, you know, do the contract, bring back those little changes, you know, work out with the city attorneys, those little changes, and let's move forward with it. I don't want to, I don't want to hold up, you know, April 4th as, you know, not having a city manager with it. I don't, I don't think we're that far apart.
Mr. Lawson?
I want to second that we're going to--
Second that for discussion?
Yeah, well, just for--
Go ahead.
Are we, to the point of seconding? Yes.
Yes.
So I'll second that, but, and to have the defined number with the intent that it's going to adjust, but that just makes us feel better that we have a little bit of control. The reality of it is, that's what the intent would be. And, and I would also say that the mayor could put the contract into place prior to the April 4th, based on those two changes.
Does the presenter of the motion agree?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Lawson. Everyone understand the motion?
Can you say it one more time for the city attorney here, so he gets the modifications correct?
I don't think so. Just to approve the contract as it is with the addition of changing--
Filing up the May 15th date where it has to be in front of the council by May 15th, or we go into the 90-day extension period or whatever way, there's, trying to find a way to make sure it's, you know, staff's doing everything possible to get it twisted by May the 15th, so it doesn't become a July or August item. And you guys work out the language to make that happen.
And the hard numbers on that one?
The other one is, right now we're explaining, we're doing 50% of the, we're doing 100% of the employee match, which would be 50% of the federal. Let's just put the dollar number in the contract, what that is. If that, if we can contribute up to 11,000, let's put, we can contribute up to 11,000 into it. So we have, we have a dollar amount in there.
That's section 2, number B.
Okay.
I'm clear and I can help with the city attorney's help, we'll get that done immediately.
And my, my goal is, like I said, is to make sure it's in front of the council. I don't want to have this issue where the council becomes divided in July because there's a contract in place that's automatic and, well, it's not our fault, it's, you know--
It's what the language, and it's what we contemplated, we will shore that up since it's not clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Jeff's still going.
Yeah, if I could just clarify something real quick here. I heard something about the mayor could then grant the contract by 4th. It's, to me, it's cleaner if you approve the contract now, contingent upon--
Yeah.
--those additional matters being incorporated into the contract, and then we can always bring it back to you later, but, because if you don't like it, then, then we can, we can deal with it that way. But I like the idea of, of either accepting the contract tonight or rejecting the contract tonight.
Yes.
And if you want to accept based upon those two contingencies--
Yes.
--that would probably be your best course to follow at this point in time.
Yes, sir.
So all we're trying to avoid here, Ted, is that we delay Steve Gavin in contract.
This will, this will delay it.
I'm not saying that the, yeah, the mayor can execute it, so he has a contract on the 14th, and, or the 4th, and he'll come back to us for final ratification.
Well, okay, now, the only problem is, is under contract law, you've got an offer and acceptance. You can accept the offer or you can make a counteroffer, which is a technical rejection of the original offer. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And, and you have an offer of a contract tonight. You have changed those provisions on the contract, thereby making a counteroffer to Mr. Driscoll. As I understand what Mr. Driscoll is saying, is he is accepting your counteroffer, those, those new provisions in here. Okay? So by doing it this way, we now have a contract and we can go forward. The only other way of doing this is to bring back the contract with the revisions in it. If you accept the contract with those provisions, then you can provide Mr. Driscoll with some retroactive pay to make up for the delay caused by the, the difference in terms that we were discussing tonight.
I would rather do it the first way. That's my brother's, but you guys have to vote on it. Ron, go ahead.
The first way is with the, with the contingency in it, we even have a contract on April the 4th.
It sounds to me as though--
Yeah.
Offer to Mr. Driscoll, Mr. Driscoll has approved that counteroffer and, and we're going to incorporate that in there and we can go on our way.
Okay. And I think that's the easiest way to do it. We don't have to come back to it. If we have a contract and then, you know, we understand the changes of--
Okay, like I said before, does everybody understand the motion? Thank you, Mr. Adams. Okay, seeing no further discussion, please vote. Passes four to one, Mr. Kerrigan is a no. Okay. Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I look forward to serving you.
Thanks. Okay, comments from the public? Mr., oops, none from the public. Mr. Comments from the attorney or our council, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the--
Item of discussion we just had in regards to the charter and the mayor thing is, you know, is there any interest in bringing us back forward to recommend charter committee for any changes in that language?
I don't think we need to now, because--
You never need it after the fact, you always need it before the fact, you know, so--
Ultimately, the council with the four-fifths vote can override the mayor, that's--
Exactly.
--I think, all right.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Seeing no, oops, go ahead, Teresa.
During our discussion earlier today, Mr. Mayor, the medical marijuana research team is working on, how about regulation team, I guess would be the better thing.
The drug team.
Yeah, as opposed to what we have in the, in the police department. But the team was offered a chance to visit a couple of sites in the San Francisco Bay Area, and we are trying to shore up a visit this Friday to San Francisco and Oakland. I just handed out a preliminary itinerary, and we're still trying to shore this up. We're as, as happy as they were to show us the facility, has been very curious to actually be able to get on scene with them. And so I'm providing this for information, the travel times, if we're going to do this on Friday, these travel times seem fairly solid, but they are still subject to change. So if anyone on the council would like to possibly attend with-- So soon we know how many people are--